First department report, nine one one. Monthly report.
Okay, so I do apologize that didn't, uh, we were having, we did a CAD upgrade during the month of February that caused some issues with our reporting, so I just got those back actually Friday afternoon, so I didn't have a chance to put together an actual paper report for you, but just pulling some information real quick. Um, our calls answered within ten seconds was eighty-two point six five percent during the, this is actually from January's numbers. Um, and then, um, Chairman Leatherup had actually asked how many, how closely they're asked or aren't we with answering the rest of the calls? Um, so, um, the next stat that the computer gets spit out is actually twenty seconds, so it's doubling that, but we answered ninety-seven point six nine percent of the calls within twenty seconds, so. So, so that's a lot higher than, obviously, the EMO, but the EMO standard is at ten seconds, so that's what we shoot for. Um, as far as, uh, activities during the month of, uh, February, we did a major CAD upgrade, which has brought us up eight revisions, which was excellent, got us a lot of new functionality, but of course, along with it came a bunch of bugs, so we've been working on that. Uh, we've got some issues with reporting, um, so I've been working on trying to get those resolved, get stuff, uh, up and operational to where it's supposed to be. But, uh, the big thing has added some new functionality for us, uh, which will actually drastically improve our accuracy of cellular data. So, um, there's a software called Rapid SOS that actually is a third-party vendor that works with each of the cell phone carriers that takes the actual device GPS data instead of trying to triangulate between cell phone towers, so it's a lot more accurate. And that information will actually end up being, um, directly input into our CAD system. So, instead of us being within, give or take, a few hundred yards of a cell phone carrier, we should be within, um, seven to nineteen feet, which will be a lot better. Um, that'll help us out a ton, so, um, planning, working to integrate that, um, it's not turned on just yet, but it will be. Um, and then the other thing that we're actively working on is, uh, trying to get our training materials and procedures and everything brought to snuff with all the changes that were made. Um, and also, there's a lot of talk about coronavirus, so we're working on implementing training and information along with that, because we have, do have a infectious disease tool that we are getting ready to turn on, hopefully tomorrow. Um, we're trying to get all of our ducks in a row, none of the directors asked us to turn that on, so it'll be an additional twenty-five questions or so that we'll ask just based on certain, um, certain criteria, so people that have traveled within the past twenty days and people that have certain, um, specific, um, symptoms that they provide to us, so. Trying to make sure, like I said, not that we create hysteria and ask everybody the questions or anybody more than what's needed, so, so.
Can I just add to that really quick?
Sure.
For that, um, that will give us advanced notice if there is, um, a person, excuse me, a person who we suspect could be a potential coronavirus patient, and that just might enable them to tell the first responders to take additional precautions when they arrive. Um, so it'll, it's good for our first responders, but also, um, the guidance has come down from DOH to look at our public answering points, be able to, and have the capability to do those questions. So, um, you know, I'm glad that we're already in that mode and these guys will be trained up, even though it's not a significant risk right now, we are. We'll be trained up and ready should it come closer.
Okay. So. Anything else for nine one one, legislature decline?
Uh, Kevin, what force stability over there? I know we had some problems there the last few years. Where are we at on that?
So, we're currently, we are three full-time positions shy, two part-time positions shy from being full staffed. So, we do have a test that was just given in January, we haven't seen the results from that yet. I'm hoping in the next month or so that we'll have that, so we can work on trying to hire another four to five people. Um, part-time is always difficult because of the training. You're asking somebody to come in for six months and work full-time to just turn around and won't give them part-time hours, so. Um, but, uh, we're gonna do the best we can to try and fill all five of those slots this year, so.
Quick question, uh, average, and I don't care about the people who've been there thirty years, what do these people on the floor make an hour?
Um, the report that actually went out just recently was a little shy, on average, we're around twenty dollars an hour, so. Starting, we are one of the lowest in the area, though.
And just to follow up, civil service is actually way behind at the state level right now. I know that, I believe, I, I believe the last time I checked it was five months at the least that they were behind on grading tests, so that, that's holding us up drastically on these lists.
Because there's such a deficit in the nine one one arena, all of us in the nine one one community are pushing very, very hard to get those, pushing them as quick as possible, so. Um, last year, we gave a test in January, we got the results, I think, end of March. Um, where other departments, like you said, didn't see it for another couple of months after that, so we're hoping to get it fast again, um, so.
Anything else for Kevin?
All right, thank you. Moving along, EMO, EMS, Billy?
Uh, the EMO report is in your packets. Uh, only a couple of highlight, things I wanted to highlight is, uh, beginning to do the county's continuity of operations update. Uh, that's one of those things that happens behind the scene about how important it is, particularly when you're, you should come up on, uh, situations like you have happening with this, with the virus, that you never know how it's gonna go. You know, he's gotta remember that it isn't just the public who might get it, it's our own staff and our own buildings, like, what do you do? Uh, and to that, uh, we are having a meeting of key department heads later this week to ensure that all departments know what their role is in response, uh, what the public health department will be doing as a response, just to make sure that, um, we're all enlaced up into identifying gaps that we can then take action on to fill. Also, uh, there will be two, uh, there's a reception center drill coming up, as well as a state evaluated full nuclear drill later this year. Staff will be preparing for it. Other than that, I'd like to see if Renee or Kathy has anything we'd like to add.
Um, we, we are participating in, uh, bi-weekly calls for Lake Shore counties with the state. Um, it was made very clear to us at the New York State Emergency Manager Association meeting that they're not anticipating that this will be as much of an emergency this year. Their perspective is that the lake is high, the lake has been high, and that people should prepare for the lake to be high. So, that was the message that was given to us. They are, um, doing advanced sandbagging operations and we're trying to identify locations where we can stage those here. Um, but we have asked them, we can, we can understand that perspective, but I think getting the public to understand that perspective is different. And I think we've seen enough shore erosion that this year, I, I believe, a lot more buildings are gonna be impacted than were in the last couple of years. So, um, it remains to be seen, the governor made the states, or not the states, like the expectation very high last year with the state resources and assets that were in all of our counties. So, we're very unclear right now about what they're actually gonna bring to the table and what they're gonna be willing to do. So, I think balancing the public expectation for response and what, what was seen two years ago is gonna be difficult. Um, we did ask if they're putting information out on their website, so we could link the eight counties along the shore are asking for a common message about that something in Oswego is happening different than something in Jefferson or Canucka, we want it to have a, you know, a unified perspective and response. So, the answer was, we'll check on that for you. So, maybe next Thursday we'll get an answer, but we're hoping that we can have a place to inform the public for what exactly they can expect for a response.
Okay. What's next Thursday?
Our, yes, so. So, we asked them, you know, we just had one this last Thursday, so next Thursday we'll have one. Um, that is the, it's at two o'clock, it's the same as the legislative meeting, but we'll have somebody from our office on that call.
And even though you're being told that, um, the levels aren't expected to be as high as last year, you still can't get a number, is that accurate?
Correct, and, um, what, and they provided us, like, you'll see they provided us GIS instrumentation of six inch. Well, we all know that in Oswego County, the wave action and the wind action is what causes a lot of our issues, so it's not the static lake levels, and we don't have any modeling at this time to look at that particular piece.
Kathy, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Any questions for emergency management?
None. Okay, that cat goes off. Do you have a press conference?
They just had a phone, uh, about the, um, the ability for local homeowners and businesses to sue the IJC, um, because they do have a pot of money and they were supposed to allocate funding for any, uh, um, negative impacts on the shoreline and property owners, and I guess that was never impact, uh, that was never implemented, so, uh, I, at this point, you know, just giving the ability to absolutely, or to sue the IJC. Of course, then the, uh, then Canada and the, um, United States would have to pick one.
Morris?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to bring up a point, I don't know if anybody can answer this much. Is the water being held back, is the reason, or just the water can't get out fast enough, so?
It can't get out fast enough. So, Erie, all of the lakes beyond us are at record level highs still, so all of that water is coming our way. So, even though our lake isn't, um, it's higher than normal, it's, it's a matter of letting it out, but we just can't let out fast enough what's coming to us from Erie.
So, the treaty that was put into place from the IJC puts a level, a maximum capacity of outflows, and when you read that we are at the maximum outflow, that's the maximum outflow of the two thousand fourteen plan, not the nineteen, what is it, fifty-eight plan? And the, that plan had a much higher outflow, but now we're at a maximum outflow that's hit this level. So, in an essence, it's also cutting back on the number of days that we're at that maximum outflow, which during the winter months right now, we should be at a maximum outflow, which we are having by, um, throughout the winter. So, now it's continually backing up, and all the great lakes come through Lake Ontario to go to the Saint Lawrence and out. So, um, it all has to come here, and the level is, continues to rise, and it's going to rise. And just at the press conference I was at, if we get to two fifty-two to two fifty-five, when there's kind of a lot to talk about, um, Green Point Marina, which is up in Sandy Creek, it's gotta be gone. Um, Village of Sodas Point says that they will not have any businesses left, they will be gone at two fifty-two, so.
Well, my, my question is, because back, a few years back, they wanted the water up so the mush rats and everybody could play around in the swamps.
Yeah, this is all.
And I'm not critical about this, but that's the way we got it, and we said, you know, we can't do this because.
The Obama administration on the way out put into place this plan.
We were at that maximum output level around, I believe, September last year, so we went through a lot of the season without being at that maximum output level. So, it's not normal for them, at this point, it's not normal to see them have the outflows at that high, right, maximum level.
Rich?
Yeah, a quick question, Renee, because you would hear about it in your, I presume you would hear about it in your department. Uh, is there any revisions being done or in place, not that your department would do them, but to reemphasize these flood zones? Because it has a lot to do with the zoning for the towns, because you shouldn't be building where you shouldn't be building. And also, I know how it is in here down, I know down south, you gotta carry flood insurance if you're in a flood zone, unless you own a place outright, not many people down there do. Uh, is that happening? Because obviously, we're talking the same thing, the last few years, it's, it's been the same. It's not gonna go away overnight here, or Phil, it's just now, it is what it is. Now, whether you call it climate change, or whatever, whatever you wanna use the nomenclature, that's fine. The bottom line is, property damage is continuing, and somebody's gotta step up and say, we gotta redo this, so we can change the zoning in the town, saying, you can't build there.
So, a lot of what we saw and heard from last year were people who had had their homes in, in their hands for generations. Um, but you're right, part of preparedness and mitigation is being able to have conversations with zoning, to have conversations with soil and water. So, we are not aware of any of those conversations happening right now, but perhaps, you know, a, a new director will be moved in, perhaps Phil has been moved in. But I think those are some things that we definitely need to look at.
Planning and zoning issues would be through the, uh, community development office, the day term. The, the, particularly the flood zone areas. It's, it's already something that is required.
But to go along with that is, that's where the, where the battle is right now, trying to change that treaty that is in place with the IJC. I mean, that's what everybody's focused on, is we, we need to go back to the plan the way it was before. I mean, because if it's an environmental purpose, why are all the bald eagles along the lakes are gone? Weren't you supposed to enhance them with this flooding, what you were doing?
Well, I, I agree.
That, that's a debate for another meeting, I guess, I just.
I know when this was put into effect, I was down in Isaac when you were working on this. My, the reason I'm saying we should look at this is, I can remember, and maybe some you do or some you don't, in nineteen ninety-three, we had a hell of a lot of flood. Now, my particular piece of property didn't, but Swamp Road, if you ever heard of that, scruple, was underwater. And all the camps along there were getting damaged by these, these water conditions. My thing is, we should be looking at, and I say we, we can put it on the list to our federal officials and keep a little pressure on the government, that won't work. But the thing is, there's people, there's, there's still land that we're letting people build on, from the county and the towns that we're approving to, where it's, it's, chances of flooding, they're, they're calling, you know, there's, there's different classifications. My house down south is a possible. I carry flood insurance because it's cheap. But I mean, it, it, we've gotta help our communities, help our towns to handle this.
Okay. So, a little follow-up with that. Sounds good. Anything else for EMO? Moving along, fire coordinator, monthly report next.
Uh, yes. Um, the report pretty much says it all. We're actually, since I compiled this report, we're forty-four structured fires in the county since the first of the year, uh, which includes four fatalities, um, which is, I can't remember ever being this busy, so, I don't know what the story is, but, um. List of classes, uh, we did have a successful county weekend at New York State Fire Academy. Um, seventy-six trainees attended, which was very good. Um, it's one of the biggest things we have coming up right now. Uh, this Saturday, we have a regional response training exercise for our regional hazmat. Um, we do a training session at Lockheed Martin at Liverpool. The, uh, Mark County Hazmat Team, which includes City of Oswego, City of Potent, City of Syracuse, Madison County, Underdog County, and we're gonna be working with the Army National Guard and the DUC on a radiological incident, um, and look at some different, uh, metering, um, stuff they have available, so we can, you know, if, if we don't have what we need to handle it, they're a good resource, so we're gonna work with them and get to know them a little bit better and their capabilities. Um, that's Saturday morning. Um, other than that, the list of activities, it's going on and on, and it's been very good.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody have anything to add? All right. Um, moving along to probation, I know that the director had a prior commitment, so we have Shannon here with us.
Good morning. Um, race the age update, since the race the age went into effect on October first, two thousand eighteen, we've had twenty-nine, approximately, uh, sixteen-year-olds come through the door, through our door, anyway. Um, some of them better than others, obviously. Some of them have gone to court, some of them did not, so, you know, we were able to work with a lot of them. Um, since the seventeen-year-olds took effect on October first, two thousand nineteen, we've had about eight. So, they are starting to, they're starting to trickle in a little bit. We're starting to notice a little bit more, a few more sixteen-year-olds starting to come through, so that's good. Um, as far as the jail-based CBI services grant update, that is a program that we're, we're, um, doing down at the jail. They're called, we added another one, I'm not sure if they've mentioned this last month or not, but we added what's called interactive journaling. Uh, Courage to Change Group down at the jail. So, it uses journals, they work through, um, different topic areas with these journals. It's really well, well-thought-out, well-presented. Um, we have three or four different, um, people in our department that are trained to do this, so we have backups to the two that are doing it. Thinking for a change is starting as well, we have a group starting next week, um, for Thinking for a Change. So, so far this year, as far as the groups down at the jail, we've run, um, one full interactive journaling Courage to Change Group, which was men. We started a women's group this morning, um, right down at the, uh, we got another room down at the jail, so we can run two groups at the same time. So, this is kind of a first for us. Uh, but we had six that were scheduled to start this morning, four of them showed up. It was, they have a hard time getting out of bed sometimes, it's early. And, like I said, the Thinking for a Change Group is due to start next Monday, so, and that, that's my, I don't have a number for that yet. We're still, um, interviewing the guys down at the jail that are eligible for it.
So, if they fail to show up, what happens, or they're out of, or nothing?
Nothing, they're just not.
He can't take the meal away?
No. It has to be voluntary, if you want, if you want to, and it's early. And it's early, it's at seven forty-five.
Yeah, but it's not like they're out late for it.
I know. You know, and I teach, you know, go.
Like they have a job to go do, they could've got time off, I mean.
Go back to bed when you get back, I don't, yeah, I don't know, I, I'm, they agreed to it, like, this morning. We, we had six women that agreed to, to, uh, participate in the group before she'll up. So, we lost two right off the bat this morning, so I'm, I'm not sure what happens in, you know, in those two or three days that they agree to it and.
Okay. Any questions? Wow, all right, thank you, appreciate it. Moving along, we'll go, uh, back to resolutions. Uh, our first resolution up is extending professional services contract for the Radiological Consultant Services. I'll actually, um, have to take a motion to get this on the floor, motion by legislature Klein, second by legislature Emmons. And Kathy, I know you, you, like, wrote this whole thing and, and went back and forth through it for a number of years. Uh, just to elaborate a little bit for, um, everybody in the room, please.
Um, back in two thousand, I believe, sixteen, if I'm, sixteen or seventeen was when we, seventeen, I guess, was when we originally had this contract for Rick Watts to, um, rewrite our host plan for Underdog County Reception Center. Um, it needed a definite revamp, it was good twenty years plus, and some of the information that was outdated. So, he went through and revamped the whole procedure, and since that time, uh, we've got our Reception Center exercises in October. Um, so we wanted to have him there to see us through this evaluated exercise. Um, not only has he rewritten the plans for our plan, for other plans, as you will see inside of here, but, um, he also was instrumental in getting us through the parish, uh, hybrid garage exercise that we had, the evaluation in last September. Um, which was an evaluated by FEMA, but he is also a FEMA evaluator, so he's very familiar with the, uh, criteria that FEMA uses to evaluate. So, it's helpful for us to know that ahead of time, because then he can make sure that we are in the direct line of where we need to be in regards to evaluations coming up. Um, so we wanted to extend this contract, not only to get us through this evaluation in October, but also, um, as you know, we're actively searching for a new director, um, I think he could provide a lot of expertise in helping that person come on board and, and learning the, the role of that person, not that Phil couldn't help out there, or Linda, they've seen that exercise before, but, um, they could also provide a lot of training if they didn't have the rad background that they very well have, that would help them with the position, so.
Okay. Anything else?
I've got a quick question for you, this, this county, do we have radiological technicians, or we just use the ones from the plant? If there was some kind of accident or whatever, but we've got this guy as a consultant, but does he have rad tax, or do we just use the plant ones?
Um, we would, we have our own that we sign out in the field, um, but we would use the facilities, if the facilities could give us them, the rad tax from Feds or NIML, we would utilize them as well.
So, we do have rad tax?
Yes.
Okay, like, how many? Um, that, that's all right, I can give details to you later.
Um, primarily, we're supposed to be self-sufficient according to FEMA, because if there's a rad incident going on at one of those facilities, those people are gonna be busy, so we have to be able to have that team doing that on our own. It's kind of how we have the field teams and we train them to the instrumentation that they need. But, um, he could very well go out and do that, he is a health physicist as well, so.
Okay.
But we do have him in our exercises as too, he's a dos assessment advisor to us, um, during exercises as of, but he would be here probably in an incident too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Swell papers, Aye? All right. Any opposed, stands approved. Next resolution is, uh, budget modification for the sheriff's office, this is to accept funding, uh, for the city doses for a special patrol officer. Uh, I'm gonna take a motion on this, by legislature Klein, second by legislature Greco, um, under sheriff, sheriff, which are the one, third amendment. Yes.
Yeah, well, we have this, uh, one of the officers that's currently there, had a, broke his ankle, so he's out of work. We thought he was gonna be back this week, so we had, the figure that we have in here was for him to be back to work and any somebody, um, this week. But I had to take two weeks off that, so I had to redo the math, and I'm just changing the number for the amount of revenue that we would bill city doses, who's looking to add a second SRO, um, from the fifty-five eight seventy-two to fifty-two three eight.
Okay, and? How's, how's the, uh, change applied to the express?
The second, going down to be thirty-six thousand, six thousand, six thousand, four three eight zero. It's going down again to the fifty-two three eight.
This change just came about as you were walking out of your office.
Yeah, I get it, appointed Friday, and he promised this morning he said he would be back. As quick as he thought, we, we've got a couple more weeks.
Okay. So, I'm making a motion to amend this presented with the fifty-two thousand three eighty, second by legislature Emmons. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say Aye on the amendment?
Aye.
On the original resolution as amended, any discussion? I want to thank the sheriff and his team for, uh, all the work you, uh, put forward on this program. We just continue to add and grow this as we both feel, and I think it's, uh, a really great way to keep our, uh, our students and those personnel in those schools, uh, safe, so. Without any more, all in favor, say Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved, make sure you sign the, uh, budget bond on your way out the door. Last res. Thank you. I want to. Next resolution is a resolution supporting Senate Bill seventy-two eighty and Senate Bill seventy-one thirty-three regarding implementing privacy protections first responders and witnesses to crimes in light of changes to criminal procedure law discovery. Um, Phil, do you have anything you want to add on this area? So, this bill came about as a result of the new, uh, criminal procedure law discovery laws and all of that was put into place. Um, the individuals, first responders who are going on the scenes, their, um, personal addresses were to be sent out. We've taken the stance that the county has, the Michigan attorney's office, the sheriff, and the county house, that it's gonna be their work addresses, um, so to protect our personnel, so I think this is a great stance for the county to take. I commend both the DA and the sheriff for, uh, working hard on this, along with Rich Mitchell, who couldn't be with us today. Um, and, and these bills would implement that type of strategy throughout the state, so. I'll entertain a motion on this resolution supporting those bills, motion by legislature Klein, second by legislature Chudal. Uh, discussion? Very non, all in favor, say Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. Uh, sheriff, do you have anything you want to add to the, uh?
I do just a couple things, if I can just remind everybody today, as of today, well, it's actually March first, but as of today, we're strictly implementing the OCA requirement that if any county employees, anybody that goes into a secure courthouse building displays an ID, please remind your staff, this is your personal, I don't care how well the people know you're there at the door, there's cameras above the checkpoints. We're being monitored in Underdog County and Manhattan, and we're just asking everybody, the judges are on board, everybody. If you're going to the checkpoint, please just have that ID on your arm most guard, on a lane, or something, just flash it to the, because they're being watched. We can't afford to lose these jobs and have the state come in and take over security. It's like, probably twenty people that rely.
It's like probably 20 people that rely on these jobs. So just please ask everybody to show the ID. It's, it's something that every other county does, we just never, before, it's here.
This is the one outside your office, directly outside your building?
If you're going in the secu, well, if you're coming in our building and going to the left, which would include the DA's office, 911, county clerk probation, if you're going in that direction, just show the ID. Every other county does it, we just don't.
But it also covers building across the way that the Supreme Court built it?
Yes. Just another real quick thing is, our warrants are stacking up just on this elimination of cash bail. We're gonna, I don't, I don't know how it's gonna affect us, but I can tell you this, in cap court, we have five or six warrants a night, or appearance tickets a night, are supposed to be showing up. Now we're getting to a point where they've had their two or three warnings. In the night, we got six appearance tickets, one person showed up. That's what we're, what they, so the warrants are gonna start stacking up.
Piggyback on that, Saturday morning, which covers everybody that gets arrested from about 10 o'clock Friday night till, till 7:00 AM Saturday morning, we had, we had four people picked up on warrants. I mean, and they were all recent ones, just...
So just to go along with that, two weeks ago, I got a call from my wife that there was sheriffs all around, everything around our house, and it was a warrant, they had a chase, ended on my road just out from our house, and the guy took out through my backfield and ended up getting brought forward by one of my neighbor on a four-wheeler, and two of our task force members and everything, and I wanted to commend this, because that was a, you know, that was a lot of snow there, trudging through and everything else, and I think we're gonna see a lot more of that. So we need to remember these, these men and women when we're out there, and just this tragic events that are occurring because of this, this horrific law that was put into place.
The effects of this is, our jail population, when we started this, went way down. I think we got down to about 70 at one point, 60 something at one point, but right now we're back up around 110. And it's just gonna, and that's without these warrants. Now, we're three months into this, the warrants are gonna start coming out, we're gonna start arresting people on warrants, which means our population's probably a little higher than the ones before. Hopefully not to the point where we have to start shipping people out, but...
And that's a problem, it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah. Legislative Greco, do you have something?
No, I'm gonna pass all of them.
Okay. DA, you gonna go along with that?
I'm not feeling very clear.
First assistant DA representative. All right. Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So maybe...
Second by Legislative Klein, second by Legislative Emmons. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.